All right, welcome to the May 14th Town of West Bath Public Planning Board Meeting. I'm Gabe Whitney, Chairman.
Jim Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
And that is a quorum. First, we're going to be going over the amendments to the agenda, which, are there any?
I don't think so unless you guys have any.
Jim?
Yeah.
No? Jerry?
I'm good.
All right, then we're on to the ordinance change amendment discussion with you, Max. We have the changes as, how should we do this? Should I go through the individual and ask questions or do you have questions or?
I want you to turn over to Max if he can intro.
Yeah, Max, do you want to speak to what these changes are?
So these changes are based on what we discussed last time. It's mostly just me noting wherever any of these changes would go. And that's pretty much the actual insertion of the language or something that can be done if you guys need it. This. I've just, it's been a while, so I hope I'm looking at most of the ones I sent out.
So is there anything different in this draft we're looking at that we haven't seen before?
Uh, no, this is based on what you've seen for, I'm looking at the ones that I sent out on March 1st. And it shows pages in the ordinance and the top I have it said they drafted West Bath in 2003. So I assume that's what goes to street because everyone.
Yep, with the first page being 21.
Yep.
Yep.
So this is just changes based on the first discussion we had. And this is just seeing if there's any final changes before it goes up or is.
So we're voting on this on Thursday, so I think it would be too late to make any changes. But Suzanne had recommended that we add language at some point to have a minimum rental time period so that we're not increasing the number of verbo rentals.
What if it's like a 90-day timeframe to really create housing versus weekly rentals? This is to grow the housing industry. A minimum timeframe of 90 days or more should be the minimum for a rental property, bringing in an accessory dwelling unit, which is like a weekly rental.
I guess I'm not following.
That's not housing. You know, this LD 2003 is to expand housing in the state of Maine. And a lot of states, I think Pittsburgh has a minimum, I think there's a 120-day minimum rental timeframe. You can't rent it for less than, and I'm quoting at least 90 days, so that it's creating housing versus a weekly rental that's not housing, that's like a vacation.
Yeah, I believe if I can jump in here, I think bringing up short-term rentals was something that was discussed very early on and the decision was not to do it just because of the actual requirements of LD 2003 to be the focus. And because what I'm doing in the ordinance overall will hopefully soon. Discussions of short-term rentals, which if we brought up for that one as well.
Been spoken to specifically.
Max, are you familiar with what Pittsburgh, I think they put a 120-day minimum.
Where did that go in that language?
It would be just something that the, if this is going to be a rental unit, the minimum time parameter should be no less than 90 days in a rental contract, somewhere in the language of the ordinance.
How would you enforce that, Suzanne? Like right now, if somebody has an ADU currently, right, and you rent to somebody at Bath Iron Works, how are you going to distinguish what they're doing now versus after?
Anything that is in effect today is not affected by the ADU language. It's already in existence. So if someone's going to build an ADU as part of the LD 2003 parameters, it's to set aside a minimum rental timeframe for that new structure. Whatever exists today, exists today.
How are you going to prove what's there today? How are you going to do that?
When they apply for an ADU permit, I think Matt, we noted in the permit.
What would that do though for the town? I mean, why would it?
It does nothing for the town. It's for the purpose behind the LD 2003 is to grow housing. And housing that isn't built at a weekly rental timeframe. It's built for people to come to an area to either see if this is where they want to live for a timeframe or create an annual lease, no different than the ADU.
So if somebody coming in and was going to do a rental, they'd have to agree to a minimum of 90 days? Is that what you mean?
As an ADU, only for the housing that's built under the LD 2003 is accessory dwellings supplemental.
Is that, that's a yes though?
Yes. But not as.
So a lot of landlords will do it like 30 days at a time. It's just 30, then 30, then 30, and it keeps just rolling over. So how would that affect that?
We have to look at how the, I'm sure Max says how the language has been written. I know other towns are doing it.
Go ahead, you do that.
Yep.
Go ahead, Max.
Yep. So short-term rentals, my question, what most towns have done if they actually want to tackle it, would actually be saying somewhere around not having the intent, short-term rentals just the intentions, rent out to someone, into an individual or a family or whatever for less than 30 days. 30 days just because people aren't, because some people are mostly using ARVs for maybe a week or two or close. I get an ARV for three or four days. But I think 90 days was brought up because it's more to less than that, I suppose. Personally, that's just my thing of, if the intent is I'm going to rent it out to someone for less than a month, then that's a short-term rental. But if I'm going to rent it out to someone for more than a month, you know, even if they're seasonal housing, that would be considered as long-term rental.
Okay, but there's nothing in this ordinance right now that speaks to any of that, right?
No, because I was told that that's some people lie for me. Because people were talking about this very early on. And I was told it was very sensitive topic for some people. If we wanted to put something on short-term rentals, it's really as easy as just giving it the definition, I can use the definition that other towns, and putting it in the matrix and just saying the CEO has to work. That's where we all have to, we don't make any special requirements for it. We just say, tell people, hey, look, all this is really the same thing, knowledge of short-term rentals exists. If you want one, buy, just opt for it. That's it.
Say that again, please, the last sentence, if you will.
So if someone wants to do a short-term rental, they simply have to get their permit from the local office. Because that's a, that's a bare minimum sometimes when we think rather than going through a planning process or complicated thing. It's just fill this one form that's just saying I'm going to be short-term rental and I'm going to follow safety standards.
And that's where you're getting to originally, what you're saying. Most other towns are dealing with this not attached to the LD 2003, but as a different area?
Under LD 2003, the, under LD 2003, towns are told you can do something on short-term rentals.
Okay.
That's just that you can. Some towns looked at that and said, I don't want to talk about short-term rentals at all because it's very controversial and they don't have the bottom ordinance to deal with it. You have some bigger towns that said, well, it's a big issue, so we're going to register it. You know, limit the numbers. And then you have some towns that just said, I think Plankton, for example, is the one that my boss was able to get done. He just says, you know, here are types of short-term rentals. If you want one, just fill out, I want to go with the office or that's it.
Okay, but we're not doing anything with short-term rentals tonight, correct?
No, I'm just trying to put otherwise by the law.
Okay.
Okay. So.
What deficiency does this ordinance correct?
It creates housing.
It's a new state legislation, so it makes our ordinance compliant with Maine law.
This was a mandate.
We're deficient in our compliance.
That every town has, is implementing this on the line of LD 2003, both in the whole type.
So does not even for us, we're just being compliant with the state directive?
Yes, and then we can put our own levels of more stringent guidelines should we choose to go that route, but yes.
They send us money?
No.
And why are we doing it?
We don't have a choice.
Yeah, we do.
But more buildings equals more tax revenue.
And it's supposed to fix the housing shortage. We're shorting 2000 years.
It was originally designed by a study in Portland, and then it was applied to the entire state. And that's what the state's going through now is trying to change what the findings were in Portland to fit the rest of the state, which is essentially not like Portland.
Which is true.
Yeah. So maybe we're not dealing with that or without adding that tonight. We're just going with the changes that Max has proposed in what we have before us?
So do we need a vote tonight on this?
No, this is just, you were asked to have one final meeting, so just making sure that everyone's questions are answered on it and you're satisfied with it.
He was talking about adding a definition. Max, are you talking about adding if and when we go down this path, it would just be a short-term housing definition?
And some of it that it's been muddled.
Yeah, she was asking as far as the definitions go, it would, what you're saying is all it would be would be adding a definition of what a short-term rental would be?
If you want to include, if you want to include something in short-term rentals, it's me just adding into the language matrix that short-term rentals are allowed. And then adding a definition that just says a short-term rental is a unit that was intended to be rented to someone, or established to someone for less than 30 days.
Yeah, we can figure that out. All right, did I answer your questions?
Yeah.
Great, thanks, Max. Do you have any more questions about what's proposed here?
No.
No, do you?
Nope.
I think we're good then. Thank you, Max. Do you have anything else?
Uh, no, just looking for any other directions from Plankton. So I take it that after tonight, I'm all set, I'm not needing for anything else or?
Are we going to start doing, when are we going to start doing the land?
Yeah, at some point we should set a date or a schedule to start going over the changes for, big changes for rewriting the land use ordinance.
So I guess the answer is we're all good with you for this, but we have more work for you coming up.
Oh, I know. Did the, I know I asked Christine this and I already got the comp plan. Is it already approved or is that this later this week?
It's approved. Yeah, that's being approved Thursday at town meeting.
Yeah, as long as I get it approved on Thursday, then we can start working on the ordinance.
Cool. Are you still living in Bath, Max?
I am.
Okay. All right, so when do we want to set up a date to start that? What's your schedule like this summer, Max?
Uh, sorry. I should be, it's just not, it's just the time I'm walking. I mean, the first day would be planning a workshop date where we just start outlining, you know, how I want to do this. Like, I just go over what my plan is, how I would start the meetings. And then at that meeting, we start planning the frequency and whether it's the first or third Mondays or, in this case, second Tuesdays. That's kind of always turned out sort of workshop.
Okay, and you get, yeah.
Great.
When do we want to set that workshop up?
Well, should we wait for it to get the comp plan to go through? Or should we just get that set up?
I don't get that, right? The comp plan will be approved on Thursday?
Presumably. There hasn't really been any remote pushback to it, so I think it'll be approved.
Yeah.
You heard it? Um, well, in that case. Funny enough, I won't be visiting the last meeting this month, but is there a talking next meeting people would like to sit down? Maybe with that, a whole other thing is just sitting down and trying to analyze what goes on.
Yeah.
We are, thank you.
I think once we got Max started, great, probably a lot of work that you could do, Max, obviously.
Right.
So we're just going to come up with a time when we can make sure we all understand the plan and.
I mean, I'm fairly open, so whatever.
Yeah, it's not warm yet, I can still live.
Tuesday nights, Tuesday nights, a good night, bombing, so.
It's a possibility.
Maybe the, I don't know, you'll have to coordinate with the schedule to see when the room's available and so forth.
Next Tuesday would work. Other than that, you're looking at June 18th being the next available Tuesday. Because you have your regular meeting on the 4th, the election on the 11th. Max is on the last week in May, it sounds like.
Yeah, I can't carry the next Tuesdays, but I can do the 18th.
Does June 18th work for you guys?
Yeah. The 18th's good.
Yeah.
Does that work for Max?
June 18th, Max? Okay.
Yeah?
And would you be meeting with us in person that night, Max?
I will be meeting in person.
Okay.
Also, this remote option, you're covered in that.
Okay, so June 18th is going to be a workshop with that.
Regular time, 6 o'clock?
Is 6 o'clock good for you?
6 o'clock works. And I think after so much time between, I might try and get a draft of what I was hoping the ordinance would look like so that I can see it at the workshop and give it a look at whether that's the format I'm all going for. I hope that I'll be up.
Great.
Yeah, 6 p.m., June 18th, in person at West Bath House.
Great.
Very good.
Thanks, Max. Thanks, Max.
All right, you're bringing pizza for everyone that day, right? Ice cream, ice cream. Thank you, Max, we'll see you then.
All right, I'll see you then.
You too. Can you unload it for me?
Sure.
Check this place down.
Are they going to do that in teams? Google, Zoom?
Zoom?
Yeah. I push the button. For vote? Is that our first one for vote?
Yeah.
All right, next order of business is non-conforming lot expansion for Charles Hewitt and Katherine Carey for 145 Rockhaven Drive. Are you?
That's me.
You too? Could you introduce yourself for the.
My name is Tobi Kavransky, I'm an architect in Bath, Maine, which is East of here. And I'm representing the application for Charlie Hewitt and Kate Carey.
Here's.
Do you have another agent authorization?
It should, they should have sent it in. If not, I can turn it over to you tomorrow.
I won't see them in the public door.
In the past, we haven't considered the application. Because, you know, because.
Is it possibly good on the phone?
We need that letter of agent authorization.
Yeah, I can get them on the phone.
Yeah, in the past, we've gotten them on the phone and followed up with a letter. Is that acceptable?
That's fine, I think, good.
It's okay.
Maybe we could go on to the next one too. We'll come back to that.
We could, yeah.
We'll give them some time to try to figure out.
Yeah, it's up to you if you want to give them a minute.
So we'll probably be back in a second, I believe in a second. Right, because I'll be off in a bit. We move on now.
Right.
And that, he was back.
Hey, Charlie, it's Tobi. Uh. Hey, can, I'm in the board meeting. Could I put you on speakerphone and you could authorize me to be your agent for this evening? Okay, hang on. Okay, Charlie. Charlie, could you say your name and say that I'm authorized?
I'm Charles, I'm Charlie Hewitt, I authorize Tobi Kavransky to be representing as an architect. I'm responsible for that.
Great. What property address?
What's the, is it Rockhaven? What's the Rockhaven, uh, 125 Rockhaven Road, West Bath?
Good touch.
And you authorized Tobias to speak on your behalf tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie, safe travels.
I'll also talk to.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have to fall off for that.
I'll get that right to you. It's, it's.
So tell us what you'd like to do.
Did you, we sent some packets along and hopefully, yes, you must have seen them there. The site has an existing structure on it. It's non-conforming. What we'd like to do is just renovate the existing structure and add a 30% addition, which is located right here. And.
Do we have just one set of plans tonight?
Well, we sent a stack.
Yeah, we sent a stack.
Yeah, so if you want to.
No, that's all right, you can look at these. Okay.
I'm good, I'll do it, thank you. So you can see where it's marked existing pad in the relationship to the water, to the New Metals River. Over here, existing septic is back here. The existing arcing is here, the wells up here by the road. All this is existing and they just want to basically renovate the interior. It's now, it's uninsulated. They want insulated, basically around 30%.
So are you going to change the outside of the building at all? Raise the roof or?
We are raising the roof. It's going to be at the same height. We're only doing this addition and we'll do new finishes. There's also new windows that are going in.
So this is all of the 30% exists right here?
Correct, in volume. We got a little more in the area that we could use in the deck, but we're not using it at the moment. And the deck, where it says historic deck, they are not doing that at the moment.
If this is existing, it will stay?
It's not, it's not existing, but the structure for it is still there in the pads. So it was recently removed, so we thought there was an allocation for it. But rather than getting into a discussion on that, we're just saying we're not going to do it. And we did calculate that within the area calculations.
Okay. So how does that work, Jonathan, then? If they remove that, they've got a year to put it back? So you could potentially lose some area if that doesn't go back?
I think the issue that we came against is if we put a rail on, we'd start blocking views of the water, which they want, Max.
Just as long as you're.
No, we are, I understand.
Your call, whatever you want to, but usually people do want to preserve their square footages.
And we could, the idea, if they want to come back at a future date and take advantage of the remaining area calculation, which would only be deck, I assume they could come back and cement for another permit on that.
Well, you can't go any closer to the water.
Right, exactly.
But if the deck, I mean, after a year, it's like the deck was never there.
Okay.
Am I right? So if they didn't do it within a year, then they may have lost it.
Okay.
I mean, this is up to Jonathan to interpret and so, but.
Understood.
If it was me, I would make sure it was there. But that's just me.
So you're saying is the proposed deck or there's not?
There's a, the word, see this word says proposed addition?
Yeah.
This deck and these stairs exist now off that.
Uh huh.
And we pulled this back to align with a roof line.
Okay.
So we are just going to infill that area right there to, you know, connect that deck to that addition. And that's roughly four foot six in width.
Oh, okay.
So that's all we're doing.
And that's not part of the area?
It is, and part of this, it is calculated, isn't it?
Yeah, the square footage.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's your chair profile.
We show a bedroom and studio, but there's an existing allocation for two bedrooms there, which we still want to maintain based on the current septic system.
So this ADU 0.0 is your.
Calculations, yes. And volume, area and volume.
So this one.
So that area underneath the, oh, I don't see. I don't see the, I don't see that deck in the pictures on the front.
It's not, it's not there at the moment in the front. It should be on the side.
I didn't see that one.
Yeah, that was there, but there's nothing, that one does not exist at the moment, which is the one that you pointed right here.
Right, correct. So that area underneath is just a crawl space area?
Correct.
Are you going to do anything with a foundation or?
We are in the back. It kind of building pushes into the hill and it's basically rotting out there. So we're going to pull off about four foot six of that and put a proper piece of concrete retaining foundation in it and build off of that. We also have to level the floors out, floors of diving back. It's, it's an old check, basically.
I'm guessing where this roof line needs to sell the roof line, that's where.
That's the addition.
Will be the connection.
Correct. So if you look at the shingle approach in Gable, that's what we're extending 12 foot six to call the addition. Yeah, so this is going to come out 12 foot six and that's the addition. And we just want to use those same lines and carry it out.
Right.
So twenty-five point four on the sort area and thirty percent on the volume.
Correct.
Are you familiar with the chapter one thousand?
I don't think so.
So D E P's.
Come on, I may not know the numbers.
This is what the thirty percent.
Oh, the shoreline, yes, I am familiar with that.
And in 2015, they propagated new rules. Are you familiar with those rules?
Yes, I believe so, that is indicated in the site plan.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Well, the way, you know, they allow certain volumes and areas and heights and so forth. Or the thirty percent.
Yeah.
Whichever people prefer.
Yeah.
So I was just curious if that, if the town that adopted that chapter one thousand that was propagated in 2015, would that have been helpful to this person?
I can't, I can't, I can't say without looking at it in some detail, but I think what I've seen in some jurisdictions is they've dropped the volume component, that they make it an area piece, because calculating that, I mean, we basically have to lay out such a way that someone can look at and say, we knew what we were doing.
Right.
But we have seen some jurisdictions changing to this straight area with a height, with a height.
Town of Brunswick, I think is adopting.
Have they, yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's been a lot of discussion, but we haven't made any progress in the town to adopt that chapter one thousand. But I do think, in this time and situation, it would be helpful.
Yeah.
And I think we need to work on that with Max and get that done, because it's, for one thing, I think we'd have better designs, maybe more flexibility in design.
Right. I mean, ultimately, on a project like this, the first question is, do we rip it down? Do we just basically get what we can do?
Right.
Rip it down and start from scratch? And for this project, that would have been better, but it's not better for the budget in their case, so we're working with.
Sure.
And I've done enough of these where sometimes you finish it and work that way and you really wish you ripped it down, because you spent more dancing around the issues.
Right.
We sort of looked at this one closely and we had a good builder and we're just going to go for it, but no.
Yeah. Yeah. So should we go through the list?
Yeah.
Of the checklist. You want me to?
Go for it.
Read up site plot plan to include twenty-six. Plan, and I think we have that. Title block, owner's name, date, etc.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we have that. Not available back to scale on the budget.
Yep.
Current model and source theme reference.
I saw the.
That's there?
Yes. Can I put it on the drawing?
Boundaries and designations of zone districts and all the lines.
Yep.
Lot dimensions, property lines and areas.
Yes.
Names of building owners with tax assessment map law and this.
Yep.
Location of rights of way of public and private, etc.
Yeah, he's got Rockhaven labeled and the river labeled.
Location of high tide mark river stream in Brooks.
Yes.
So that's, that's the high tide mark there?
Yeah, the red line right there.
Location outline of all existing buildings within the property and proposed buildings showing expansion area. We have that. Existing and proposed setback dimensions of structures to the shore up there on the side. Areas to be cleared of tree growth. Any clear?
No.
Areas of cut for braving?
The only place is probably in the breakness area where the building is buried, goes into the hill. We'll do a little terrace here that would drop the grave and a little wall.
Location of wetland areas and that classification?
All we have is the New Metals River, I think.
Flood hazard areas to pick it up flood insurance.
Yeah. You're up off the water pretty high.
Yeah. Is there any?
I do have a cross thing.
Okay. Okay, I think we'll cover that. Location sign of existing sewer systems, water supply, culvert and drainage. You okay on that?
Yeah, good.
So the origin of segmentation control where it is?
We're showing this dash line here, which basically is the sill fence.
Okay.
To carry that out.
And we know that the camp or pond or seventeen ninety is a.
And on this, just real quick, on the proposed area, this is permanent, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So they have the application of the supporting data, written tag of interest in the property, number eight of organization.
I'll have that tomorrow.
Location of description, location description on the map?
Yes.
What was the building to be expanded?
Yep.
Says showing all sides, but I think we're far. Complete site plot plan, erosion and, that's a little redundant, settlement control plan. Number eight, building plans of existing structure, and we have all that. Nine building plans showing the expansion, etc. Good on that. Copy of deed and all covenants, restrictions on existing law.
You have the deed, there's some covenants.
And there's no restrictions on law. It's all up to us to enforce anyway. Expansion sketches to support percent worksheet calculations. We have that. Type of industry of water supply for expansion. We have that. Type of industry adequacy of sewer disposal for expansion. That's okay. Drive away access and no interest penalty reserved in front of the road. And you will need an affidavit that you'll have to record in the registry by the owners' law, showing the expansion. And I think Jonathan will help you with that.
Take care and that's it. Building term across this happens.
Okay. Okay. So I, I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I think we move to pass as soon as we receive the letter.
We can just make a contingent on that.
Yeah.
So, any comments from the public?
Any public comment? Okay.
I recommend approval.
We only do one a night, so.
In that case, for next needs.
Just kidding, just kidding. Okay, so.
Tell me your.
As presented, contingency, a letter of agent obligation is provided.
Second, on favor.
Okay.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you so much. I can't, I live in West Bath.
You do? Where do you live?
Camp One. You know Dennis White's old house? It's where Anthony Keefe wants to do his development. I'm living in the old house.
Oh, yeah, okay, we're over there.
I, I'm, but I can talk, I mean, we run across the ADU thing a lot.
With production of.
And the reason a lot of people are doing it is because you're, it allows you to build something on your property that you normally wouldn't, so to get additional revenue and also provide housing. The problem they're having with it on short-term rentals is partying and this sort of dissolution of community, because you're always have new people coming in. And this hotly debated thing about how many days is a big deal.
Well, it, you know, the LE two thousand three is designed to develop housing.
Right.
Permanent housing for people. And I'm going to pose, you know, if you have a house, you're doing an Airbnb every night, whatever exists today is today, but future buildings are designed to build housing. And that's not that a week at a time.
We have ton of the.
Exactly, no. I mean, they have big areas like London where it's all investment, it's turned into a bad.
You have a.
I'm not opposed to there's a degree or whatever people are doing, but it's, because it's.
Oh, yes. I think there's more people around here than you think Suzanne, that do the short-term rentals for bad lineups.
But they, but they're not doing it for less than a day.
Yeah, there used to be multiple morning houses in Bath and they do it daily, weekly. I can take you down to Washington Street, but I'm sure you know where they used to be when I was a kid. But I think there's a lot, a lot more short-term rentals than you think for.
There's also significant choice happening for B I W that they're trying to build for, for, I mean, B I W hired seven hundred people last year and a hundred and sixty one state is rescued by now and, and a weekly rental economically is not going to be the best solution in most cases.
I see a lot of guys come out of Canada where I worked and they all do the vacation rentals, that's what they do. They don't stay in a hotel, it's been a, for a period of years.
And it exists today. I'm not saying that it's not, you know, whatever's today is today. I'm not opposed to any of that.
Sounds like you are, Suzanne.
It's, it's not designed to be short-term rental.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Tom, is Jim you, it was like a hundred o'clock maybe, it's very tall.
So is he here?
I've got, Jerry, there's a couple copies out on the table.
Thank you, I just did.
So.
All right, next up is Mike Montgomery of seventy-two Roseville with a non-conforming lot expansion. Want to come on up?
Hi, everybody, I'm Mike Montgomery, seventy-two Roseville Road, West Bath. This is virtually, and I'll define virtually in a minute, virtually the same plan which was approved in 2018. Plan approved in 2018 was for an addition thirty percent expansion, which at that time included outbuildings. This plan does not include the outbuildings because I understand you don't include outbuildings now, that was a change. But anyway, that plan from 2018 was like a sixteen and a half foot by sixteen and a half foot structure. Just one year, you see the plan for it is sixteen by sixteen. So basically, I'm adding three walls to the north end of the existing property. I'm not coming any closer to the water than the pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's a single story. And I think, Jim, you were there six years ago when I did that. And as far as the drawings go, the site plan, Alice drew that, Alice Reed, which basically showed us a shoreline, it was a pen and ink, pen and ink drawing. I've given you the figures in the map that indicate it's thirty percent expansion. So I'm just, I'm not asking for any more than what was approved six years ago. The reason I'm here, well, there's two reasons. That my request expired after the end of one year, so yeah, I just decided not to do it then. So Jonathan said I needed to resubmit, so I resubmit. And it does not exceed thirty percent in volume nor square footage. I figured the numbers both ways.
So your floor area is expanding two hundred and fifty-six feet, square feet, and your volume is expanding by twenty-eight hundred and sixteen cubic feet.
That correct?
Yeah. And that is thirty percent?
Yes.
You go ahead. Okay.
It's right here behind the town hall and you want to walk down there and take a look. Or for you old people, drive down, take a look.
How do you look at me?
So.
Am I the oldest one here?
Out where I can figure that out.
So have you, you know, as far as the application, did you provide those?
Yeah, I think the deed is the one you're most interested in, that's it.
So.
And I own two properties there, so I'm a budding homeowner.
Say it.
I own two lots down there, so I bought my other lot.
Okay. So where's the plan that shows the setbacks and so forth? Maybe I just don't have everything.
Did you provide it to the, in the?
Is it this one?
Yeah. You have that?
Okay. So it's a setback right now, and it's going to stay the same up there, huh?
Yeah.
So what's the, what's the setback now? Ten feet? Oh, no, that's the.
This is sixteen by sixteen.
Yeah, what's the setback from the water?
Five feet.
Okay.
And I don't move any closer.
Actually, you're going to be further away, right?
This is the shoreline.
Yeah, so I mean, this is, this is five feet.
Right.
And you're actually going to jog in.
Yes, correct, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Be further away there and I'm coming four feet here, standing further away here.
Okay.
And ninety feet this direction.
So. Well, we have, we don't, we don't have a thirty, twenty-four by thirty-six plan. Do we need a twenty-four by thirty-six plan, Jonathan?
We've got the big plan.
Should we? We have that, okay. Okay. Now it shows.
So you have three of these and four of the little ones.
Yeah.
There's enough paper up there, you're going to be able to find something.
No.
You're asking for it, but you don't want it.
I'm just going through the checklist.
That's fine.
Okay. Site plot plan to include twenty-four by thirty-six is size of the scale that was required, if required doubt is clear and legible. And I'd say that we, that this plan is probably adequate in this case.
Yep.
So we'll have to vote on that eventually, but we'd ask for a waiver on that. Is that how we handle that?
Yep.
Okay. And, you know, Carol, current lot owner, boundaries, lot dimensions. I guess I'm satisfied with that. You okay with that?
You're, you're on number two.
I'm on number seven.
Number seven?
Number, James, I'm a budding artist, and you're your own butter?
It's like you.
So.
That's a point.
Like where this was approved in twenty eighteen, I mean, I think it's.
Yeah.
There's no broadways across the property. I timed my.
Except for you, Jim, I'll let you go.
Is there any, any broadways across the property? Location outline of all existing buildings within the property, proposed buildings showing expansion area. I think we have that. Existing and proposed setback dimensions, we'd have that. Areas to be cleared, tree growth.
No tree, no tree growth cleared.
And areas of cut, filled grading?
No grading.
Any wetlands?
No, except for river.
Flood hazard area?
I don't have flood insurance. My mortgage doesn't require it. Well, I don't have a mortgage. So I don't require.
How high did the water come up?
Came up high.
That would be honestly the only thing we'd have to worry about.
It was like F high.
Right, gone. Would be like allowing a building permit in a flood zone.
Right, but that's not.
It's not, okay.
As of now.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, it was all-time record high, and I was fine dry.
Tell me about your septic system.
It's a brand spanking new, and Jonathan gave the final permit on it about five years ago.
Because you're talking about you have a holding tank or something?
No, it's a septic drip system.
So this is from?
It's from before.
Okay.
That's part of the original submission.
Any disturbance on the soil?
No. Except for posts that I put.
And then on eighteen and nineteen, not within the.
Yeah.
Okay, he does have an application. And copy of the deed. I assume that you have more than one sixth interest in the property.
Yeah, you asked for a copy of the deed, so I gave you a copy of the deed. I didn't give you all six of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got all six of them. I figured you wanted that for boundaries and that, so.
Location description on the map, at this point, we have that. Do we know, do we have any photos? Say again. Photos of buildings to be expanded showing all sides. So I've got the drawing, I'm sure I lost that, I said. So complete site plot plan, twenty-four by thirty-six. I'd say we, we ask for a waiver on that. I'd say, uh, the, 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 the control plan.
I have, I have all told them.
Building plans that include building outline dimensions.
Which are these things.
And. Where this is approved in twenty eighteen, I'm going to say we're going to do a waiver on those, also eight and nine. And copy of the deed, we have. Spacious sketches, we have. Do we have adequate supply of water there?
Yes.
Do you have a well along?
Yes.
And sewage disposal system is, you said fairly new?
Existing, yes.
And you don't need to drive answers, correct?
No.
And you're aware of the requirement of affidavit?
Affidavit to register with the town of the thirty percent expansion.
Yeah, you just attest to what you have expanded and required a relationship deed. It doesn't go to the town. It's through Jonathan.
We get a copy of it after it's recorded, but you do, take the building permit for the project, we'll do that form at the same time.
Yeah.
So it just, it just shows what your expansion is.
Yeah.
And then it shows what's remaining of the thirty percent.
Correct.
Do you have any thoughts, Jonathan?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
You know, it's smaller than the original approval.
Yeah.
It's great. So I think, so we make a motion to waive the, um, what was it?
The plot plan.
The plot plan.
Sure, I'll, I'll move that we waive the requirements of the site plot plan. And the, um, the twenty-four by thirty-six site plot plan and the, um, I guess that was it.
What was, what was on eight and nine that you said you did to be waived?
I think it was the full size process.
Yeah, there's the, the building plans, and he has provided those.
Okay.
So it's just the site plot plan, twenty-four by thirty-six, so I move that we waive that requirement.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Okay. So then, um, do you want to make one, Jim?
Yep, a motion to accept with the conditions, we have any, what we have for conditions? Nothing.
I don't think so.
A motion to accept as presented.
Second.
All, or discussion, all in favor?
Okay.
Isn't it, I say we should approve. He's going to keep it going. We hit our quota, we won't over.
Thank you so much.
So now you can start building. Have you started?
I have, I have materials there on site.
Oh, wait, I need to get this to Carter first, and then she'll do you a copy of it. Um, yes.
Does that, does the worker? Yep.
So let's.
Public information and comments.
Are you public today?
I am, in no official capacity either. I have no comment either.
Okay.
You're also public. Do you have any further comment?
I think West Bath is my favorite place in the world.
Right on.
All right, glad to be here.
Off the record show.
I agree with you.
Um, any other business?
Just approvals and minutes, I guess. I will make a comment, I guess I'm not a business about short-term rentals.
Well, I'll talk to you, can I talk to you after me? I just want to know what my next steps are, what I should do.
So I think, um, you know, we need to look to see what the problems are with short-term rentals, if any, and, and go very carefully. Because I know there's a lot of people in town that do have short-term rentals, and they support, they supplement their income with it, pay their taxes and so forth. So we want to be very careful. There have been some instances in South Plow, we've all written the newspaper, where people go in for two or three days, over a place, and now have a hundred of their closest friends come and potty, and, you know, make some nuisance in the neighborhood. So, you know, that kind of thing, we certainly don't need with a short-term rental. But I haven't, I haven't, I haven't been aware of anything like that happening in West Bath, have you?
Only on future builds. It has nothing to do with existing properties. This LD 2003 is for the expansion of housing as an ADU, and it's putting the stipulation on the ADU on a timeline, not anything that's currently existed.
But there's ADUs that currently exist now.
Whatever exists today exists. It has no effect on, it's, it's the expansion of the LD 2003, building new units in the future. Nothing's changing for what exists today. There's no stipulations, only on the, on the newly built ADUs that are not, not to be built as a weekly rental.
Okay.
There's a local electrician in town, I want to say his name, but he rents two Bath Iron Works guys.
They're entitled to it right now. I mean, you're, there's nothing.
It's the same idea, Suzanne, whether it's that part, that house in that accessory dwelling, or a new one that he built, he would still, probably most likely rent to like Bath Iron Works guys that need housing. Like you, you know, I think you got it in your head that they're all people, like, short-term rentals, vacation things, but I don't think there are. I mean, look at the need we have for parking in West Bath. There must be a need for housing, right?
There's a need for housing across the country and the state. I mean, it's, it's, it's designed, when you look at, like, when B I W lost a significant amount of staff, they tried to hire because there wasn't housing. And, and that's only in Bath. It's, this is, it's proposed that by twenty thirty that Maine will be short eighty thousand housing units. You're not going to build that out of your group rental. But, but they, I'm not opposed to what exists today. As, as we grow, it's designed to grow housing. You know, maybe there's a stipulation put in there as an employment contract. I mean, I don't know, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's not for someone to come from a weekly stay or a four-day stay, whatever it happens to be.
So how do you, the way I'm from the outside looking in, you're one person that wants that done, so how do you implement that?
So I, I'm just looking at, there's other towns that are doing it. Pittsburgh, I think, put a hundred twenty day minimum. So I don't know the answer to it. I'm just trying to.
So is it a matter of your discussion with the board and.
It's just that the community, it's, it's, it's when you're coming out with it, the accessory dwelling units.
Yeah.
Um, and how, and what it's meant to build, how do you manage it?
Yeah.
And certainly, I mean, you see all the problems in Portland, and I don't know the answer to anything.
Right.
But I don't want to get, I don't want to get cut short that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing. I'm just wondering, how do you implement that?
I have to, I, I, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to, you know, I, I'd have to, I'd love to see what Pittsburgh brought into it. Um, you know, if you're talking about, Jeremy, you have, you know, or that you have, when they take out a permit, is it saying that this, this will not be rented for less than thirty days, and that's maybe the, it's no different than filing your, your stuff, the accounting, when you do your thirty percent enlargement. You know, you're saying, I'm not, I'm not doing this.
What would have hurt to rent it for seven days, or, I mean, why would it, why would that be a bad thing?
It's not necessarily creating housing as a, as a, as a whole entity. It's, it's, this is designed to find housing for families, for, I mean, it's not.
Well. Yes, no, I understand that, but you're, you're saying, okay, so you can have an ADU only if you're providing housing for families?
No.
Is that what we're saying?
It's not to, it's not to cre, to increase the current Airbnb population. That's not what LD 2003 is for. It's not to increase, oh, you know, an Airbnb concept of a weekly rental or a short-term rental. It's to grow housing as a whole.
I understand that.
And I don't have.
The way it's written right now, and what we've approved tonight and looked at with Matt, is that people could put an ADU and rent it as an Airbnb.
They can right now, absolutely.
They could, couldn't they?
Mm-hmm.
So. I guess, you know, you, you, I mean, sometimes people will rent a place out for a few weeks a year, but then the rest of the year, they, you know, they do short-term housing. I mean, there's all kinds of, um, I don't want to say traps to fall into, but, you know, we definitely, we just really careful.
Or if someone wants to use their property for a short amount of time and then do somewhere else, and that breaks up how they can potentially rent it. I don't know, I, I kind of see it as like, I don't want to see any further restrictions on it. I see the issue being more what you were speaking to of having a, a ton of people show up at a property and being more of a nuisance to the community than, than the issue being of ADU of however that property owner wants to use it.
I mean, there's been people that's, they're going to go and they're going to live in France for, you know, three weeks, so they'll put their house up for it as an Airbnb. I wouldn't do it, but, you know.
People do it, though.
Yeah, people do it.
But, but how, they're using their house today. We're not changing how they can use their house today. It's, it's, it's as you build a supplemental unit on your property as of July one. It's what are you, what are the plans for that? Whatever you want to do with what your house is today is yours to decide.
Yeah, but when, I mean, when somebody builds this ADU, additional dwelling in there, I mean, it's, it's hard to know if you're going to have it as a Airbnb at some point in the future, yes, maybe. Maybe you're going to rent it out, or your mother-in-law's going to live there for the next five years, and once she is no longer.
We would approve that.
Maybe she'd like to be able to, maybe the owners then would like to be able to, you know, do short-term rentals, you know. And I guess, I'd be really, I, I want to be really careful how we approach that.
It's, it's just, it's protecting, you know, are you, are you the neighbors that live next to that weekly party transfer also when people come in there? So that the rest of the community is sitting around that vacation where people come in, and, and people like, they're entitled to have a great vacation, but it's the neighbors that then pay the price for that weekly turnover also.
What price will they pay?
If, if you've got people that are coming in with a hundred people, or throwing parties every night, and you're the neighbor to that.
Couldn't that be addressed, though, by saying, you know, no, no large parties or something?
The lease, the lease would say a maximum of four people or six people for a rental.
Yeah.
This is just up for discussion for the community to get involved in.
Yeah.
And you could just as easily have five twenty-year-olds going together on a rental and throw wild parties every weekend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do think Pittsburgh with the beach right there probably has a bigger problem than West Bath. I don't know, maybe. Maybe we are a vacation destination. I don't see it being quite the issue that it is.
Doesn't attract the parties.
I mean.
Yeah.
We're just happy to sit here.
Thousands and thousands of Airbnbs, you know, rent it every, every week. And you hear about the one that was the problem at Rillit Beach, you know, that, when they had, they were having parties.
But it has nothing to do with the current population of housing. That's, that's, whatever exists today, you do whatever.
Well, it's about eighty years.
It's the expansion of that.
Eighty years, yeah. But, um, so, so let's say I want to put in a, an ADU, and my mother-in-law is going to live in that, and she lives in that for five years. And then she goes in a nursing home or assisted living or whatever. So now I've got an empty, I'm going, huh, I can pay some taxes here, maybe. You know, I'll do a short-term rental. And renting short-term is a whole different ballgame than renting like month-to-month or annually and so forth. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a whole different mindset for the rental. And, you know, they did it work as a Bath Iron Works, too.
Count on nurses?
You know, that say, well, I'm just not going to commute the last week in the month, I'm going to take a run, you know. So I just think if, we're going to put some restrictions on ADUs about how long they can be rented.
I mean, there's a ton of defense contractors that rent Airbnbs.
You know, I just think we need to go really carefully, but that's just me.
And, and it's truly for the community to get involved in discussion, which is what we're doing here, but on a larger scale with them in West Bath. And it's just to hear their thoughts before we go down a path that we can undo, one way or the other.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're required to put this in effect July one, we want to make sure we put it in effect to represent the community of West Bath as a whole, whatever their choices.
Yeah.
And if there's a major problem, right, the public would come forward.
But I don't think, when, when we had people at the SLA meeting last week, or whenever we went through it, people didn't know what it was. So we're trying to explain to them, and that's the first time they're really understanding what this is. And this is to educate what's coming on July one, and what we can do in West Bath to do whatever our community wants us to do further beyond what the state's requiring us to do. You know, I mean, we, they literally were given the paperwork to read at Firehouse on Tuesday, whatever it was, whatever day it was, Tuesday.
Last Thursday.
Or whatever day it was, but. Or whatever day it was, but they don't even knew what it was. So it's, it's because we're here and we've been involved in that process, but there's a significant amount of our community that's completely unaware of what's happening on July one and what that means to the town.
Yeah, I mean, me, not even our community.
Well, I mean, our priority, you know, our priority here is to educate West Path. And, and, and we are allowed, we did, we put stipulations on the minimum size, maximum size and all of that, so we have put boundaries on it, but we want to make sure that we've got everything available to the community for them to understand what they're, what they're facing. Good, bad or different, just educate them.
Yeah. So, any other business?
Do you want to approve the minutes?
Yep. All right, then, approval of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
I move the approval.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Okay.
The next meeting is...
I copied and pasted this from the meeting that got canceled. So the next meeting date is actually June fourth and then a workshop...
June eighteenth?
June eighteenth to follow. And we're, we've passed the deadline for applications, so the meeting on June fourth will strictly be West Path parking with Derwood Parkinson.
Will we be able to review that in advance?
Yeah, Derwood said he would get it out to you at least a week before the meeting, so I would look to see that.
I'm not sure how long or how much legal lease is it, just going to have a little time to look at.
Yeah, no, because I'm sure he wants your input on... I think he said that you guys could negotiate what standard, what, what grade you wanted to find acceptable in the review, so...
All right, then I motion for the meeting to adjourn.
A second.
All right, favor?